Hey, que pasa, Calixco? Welcome back to the podcast. Like always, I want to thank my friends here at Calixco Brewing Company for allowing me to record today's episode here. I really, really appreciate it. Also, I want to thank, they didn't sponsor this drink, but thank Calixco Apples. I don't have, I hardly have any sugary drinks, but I always see my nephews and my nieces and my son drink this, so I figured it was gonna be good. I don't know.
It's good. Like I said, I'm a Brawley boy, so Johnny's has a donut shop tea, has its special place in my heart, but it's pretty good.
So you already heard him. My friend today is, my friend, my guest today is returning guest. I don't remember how many times you've been on, but it's quite a few. My guest today is current school board, elementary school board candidate,
trustee.
trustee, candidate for Brawley City Council. Gil Revolar is the guest today.
Thank you. Yeah, no, it's been a while. I was like, man, their, his sponsors are getting to him, you know, he's like asking me to come back. No, but, you know, it feels good. Yeah. It's, I didn't, you've mentioned it before, like every time I come on, it's always something different, you know? And yeah, I'm just someone who never likes to settle, who likes to challenge myself, who wants to better the community, who wants to be productive. And so, yeah, my term's ending on the school district this year, and I thought this was a great opportunity. One of the council members is not seeking reelection, so it's a good opportunity to throw my name in. I said, my term and the school board ends, so if I lose this election, I'm not on any board and I don't, I get to spend more time with my family and not do politics and work out and do everything, all the fun stuff, but if, and if I win, I get to serve Brawley. So it's a win-win. I think regardless of what happens, there's some real good candidates. Actually, all the candidates are really good in the Brawley race. I, my hats off all, they all represent, we all represent something different. And I'm proud to be on the ballot with them, but I'm in it to win it. And so, yeah, anyways, that's about it.
So you've been on the podcast a couple of times already. Do you think that you want to do a little intro or about yourself, or do you think?
Yeah, no, Gil Revolar, born and raised Brawley boy. I don't know where to start. Yeah, I just got a ten-year-old daughter, me and Holly, my partner in Brawley. Yeah, I don't know much to say, man. Like I said, I've been on the school board the last four years, you know, and I ran because my daughter was in the school district, or within, in our public school system, and I wanted to have a say. And I looked at the ballot and the list of who was running at that time, and I saw no parents, or no current parent. And I thought, hey, who's speaking? Who's representing us? Who's representing those like me with children in that system that they're making decisions on? And so I threw my name in and won. And now, kind of similar with the running for city council. I want to represent, I want to represent, have a voice for, I think people think of us millennials as still virally young, but now we're grownups, you know, we have kids, you know, millennials now have families. And so it's also speaking to the working families and those who are just being productive, raising their children, you know, my daughter's ten. And what kind of Brawley is gonna be there for her as she gets older? And not just her, but me, you know, I'm thirty-two, but my roots are in Brawley. I'm gonna live, I was born, I'm gonna live and die in Brawley. And so what kind of city are we having for those like me who are gonna spend the rest of their life in town, in the city? So a lot of things. And but yeah, my family has small business owners, our small business owners, Brownies Diner in Brawley, Tom Pump. So also like a lot at stake, I feel, there's many families like mine who found success in the community. And so Brawley goes down. Everything they worked for and my grandparents worked for goes down too. And so it's a big picture thing and really just want to represent Brawley and represent my community. I've been going back and listening to, look at old agendas, old plans, even listen to old candidates, because although I look for the future and progress, I do respect the history and tradition. And a lot of things, common things I heard from candidates that ran and some that eventually were on the board, on the council was, was I want to serve Brawley. And I think regardless, you win, you serve it, but I want to lead Brawley. Like I really want to lead. I want to step up and put on for Brawley. Not just at a local, smaller level, but as statewide, you know, when I was on the school district, as a school district trustee, I was, I represented the county and the California School Boards Association. And then I was elected as, I'm out of breath right now. I'm just going. I was elected as treasurer of the California Latino School Boards, and that's a state, those both, that was statewide election from school members across the state. Because I also believe that we have to tell our story, you know, we really have. And I've spoke at congressional, made public comments at congressional hearings. I wrote letters to our legislators, because I think sometimes the valley, we think we're ignored and we're not heard, and there's truth to that, but it also comes on us. We need to be telling our story. We need to be getting out there. We need to be building these connections. And so, you know, on that level as well too, I want to represent Brawley and make sure our story is being told. Don't get me wrong, we have some real big issues in the valley and in Brawley and in the valley as a whole, but also really new things. This is a really unique area. And there's a lot of beauty, creativity, and just be a representation of that. So yeah, I want to, I don't want to just serve, I want to lead Brawley and lead it to a stronger and brighter future.
Being on the school board was your first experience in like public office and, you know, politics. And I'm sure that when you ran the first time, people told you, oh, you don't have the experience, or you're too young. Now that you've already had a term under your belt, do you feel that you're better, or better candidate for whatever position you might be running for now than you were the first time?
Oh, man, definitely. Yeah. I had, not only that, I was on, I was board president during, during a year of COVID. So there's some times when we were meeting once a week. I think school boards, you know, put in a lot of work. I think, I know at Brawley Elementary School District, we probably met more times than any other elected body in the Imperial Valley. I, there's times every week, I'm sure other school districts, just with everything changing, as president, you know, super, do you want to call a special meeting? Let's do it. You know, this is happening. Call us, I'll make myself available. I'll zoom in, I'll, I'll be there, whatever I gotta do. But yeah, you know, if this is, needs to be done, let's do it. And so, yeah, I think other than the incumbent in this election, I'm the only other one, except as incumbent with elected body experience. And so I have that experience. I can, you know, knock that off. It's like, they can't use that against me. And I know you, I'm thirty-two, which is not, people tell me it's young. I don't feel it. So.
I mean, I'm forty, so I could say that thirty is, thirty is young.
Even with experience, so like my job, I know I'm trying, trying to separate my hats, because people are trying to get me in trouble. But I work out of the county executive office, which is a top office in the county. And so I have this administrative experience in seeing how public government organizations are ran, you know, and I've learned from many great people in the Tony Rojotes, former CEO, another Brawley resident, and the current CEO, Miguel Figueroa, the old city managers. And, you know, I've talked to them after work, off hours, just say, you know, this is what I'm, I'm running for. Can you give insight on what you saw in your cities, on your organizations? And then even Esperanza, I have a really great relationship with, oh, man, I just saw their day. She's like, hey, do you miss me? And I go, I'm getting more work done. She's stopping my office and we talk. And but, you know, I really learned a lot from public official, administrative officials. Not just the elected, it's not just the politicians. I know those that we can, all of us can talk all day and talk circles and say a lot of nothing. But it's like, those administrators that are doing the day-in, day-out work and understanding how things are implemented, how things are designed, implemented and maintained. I think it's one thing to have an idea, and I've heard other candidates talk about all these ideas, but there's also an aspect of how, how do you prepare? How do you plan? How do you implement it? How do you maintain it? What's the long curse? What's funding? What's, so, you know, having that experience, like I said, on a school board level, understanding the politics, because it is also, at the end of the day, you can have a great idea, you can have great planning, you have all this, but you still need two other votes. You know, you still need a majority. And so understanding that kind of strategy. And then, as I said, also in my day job, just understanding the administration of it and how it followed through and what it takes. And so, yeah, it's, I have the experience, I think, at all levels to understand. And even maybe private sector, you know, my family are small business owners in the restaurant industry, which is one of the hardest industries to find success in. And hearing them out, my grandma also has a little, built a little mini empire of property and hearing her, her just thoughts on how she built it up, how she helped set my dad up for success, and who helped set me up. And so, yeah, I'm just a learner too and listener. I think, I said this morning, I'm sorry if I'm just ranting, I'm probably dehydrated right now. All morning I went door to door, just talking to people, hearing them out. And really just trying to just earn the vote and just show people that I'm ready to lead and I have the experience and vision and just will to, to work. At the end of the day, I'm gonna work. I'm a worker. And I think my career has shown that. I think being elected has shown that. I think even talking to people, if you talk to people from the elementary district, I think they'll tell you that, don't get me wrong, decisions hadn't made at times are tough. I look back at some things and it wasn't easy. But ultimately, it all came down to, I would listen, I would get the information presented to me and go from there. And so, yeah, it's all, I think, led up to this. I think it's always about timing, and I feel like the timing was right, and the timing is right. And hopefully I can win a seat on the Brawley City Council this coming November.
A lot of people talk about, especially newcomers are like, oh, I'm not, I'm not a politician. But, you know, from talking to other elected officials and people that have been, you know, part of the city council or city manager, you know, playing politics is a huge part of getting your agenda through. Was it something that you, you kind of learned, you knew coming in, or was it something that you learned in the, being in the school, in the school board?
Yeah, I learned, yeah, I had some ideas, I think, but also then when COVID hit, like every, everything we had planned, all the momentum's too, we were building, just got shut down. So understand the roles and restraints and limitations. But yeah, it's, it's a lot of, but I think it also just breaks down to communications and relationships. I think it breaks down everything. It comes down to working with your fellow trustees or council members and your administration and your employees and staff and just really ensuring there's that trust, that confidence and your respect. I think people see you working, people see that you give a damn. They, hey, they get some buy-in and building a culture of, of all these things that, you know, make an organization successful. So, but even, I can't even go back to my education. I have a master's in public administration. And there've been several times throughout my career, like I don't use anything I learn. But, but it did give me like an understanding of structures, of public sector and how things should be or in, in theory or on paper. And so it always, I think, helps give me a framework of, of government and how it should be implemented and, and the structures. And so I think that gives me respect for the process, because I think sometimes you gotta be patient, you gotta be patient to see things through and have trust and faith. And so I think just having this, all these, all this, all this, everything I've just learned, I think just from being willing to learn has helped me just get a better picture of things and, and better understanding of how to get things done. And ultimately, that's what it's about, just getting things done. And we've got a lot of stuff done at Brawley that I'm proud of at the school district. And I think, like I said, I think that speaks for itself, you know, we're gonna have a new middle school coming in. We're expected to begin construction on new middle school, which my friend was like, man, they were talking about middle school when we were in high school. And I was like, for real? And he's like, yeah, I was like, man, we're getting it, you know, and I was talking to me, it's like, it's the board coming together. Okay, how are we gonna prioritize this? What are, what's the direction we're gonna give to administration? Okay, why are we not, why are we keep falling back in line? Who do we gotta talk to? And the board really came together on how to address this, and now we're gonna see it. Got modernization in every school site. Like I said, I know we're not where we want to be. There's still a lot of impacts that came from COVID that we're still dealing with. We're not where we want to be, but we're seeing progress and might not be as fast as any of us want. But I think we built a really great culture at our school district with staff and administration. And I think I played a big part in that. And I say, I played, not me, it wasn't me. I didn't go on that school and everything. No, I played a part and understanding my part and, and seeing it through. So a lot of stuff, a lot of, yeah, we got a special ed administrator, which was, Brawley Elementary never had one, and now we brought in a administrator for specifically that. So there's things that I'm proud to have been part of, that, that needed to be addressed. And like I said, that politics, okay, how do we maneuver this? How do we get this fine? How do we convince? How do we debate? How do we, what's the policy? And I, I think problems, like at the school, just always kind of see it as, our problems aren't unique, no matter where, we can always look elsewhere. So I was always, and part of why those connections and being on this school board association, Latino school boards, was seeing other districts, hey, I got this issue. How did you address it? Oh, we did this. Hey, I seen, oh, I saw you did this. Hey, so I'm also big on not reinventing the wheel. Like every, all my ideas are not original. They came from somewhere else. Might have to tailor it to fit our needs, our community. But at the end of the day, the resolutions and answers are out there, is how do we get them and implement them for our benefit?
And you've been involved in, you know, the other campaigns when it comes to like city council or, you know, helping other people run. And you kind of know the, how a city council runs and a school board runs now, you know, obviously you're in a school board. Looking at both, you think it's dealing with the bureaucracy of both boards, which one, because I know, you know, working in a school is a lot of head code and all this.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, I think I'm probably going for a health, from a healthier budget to one that's not, to be quite honest, and that's fine. I'm used to doing more with less. And no, but yeah, because education itself has been a crash course for me, you know, as you know, unless you're in it. I think people just think, oh, kids go and teach how to rerun. That's, no, there's head code, there's programmatic, there's funding sources, there's, you know, there's all kinds, a whole different world. Unless you're in it, you don't know. And but a part or two why I'm running is to build this bridge between the city and schools. I think we've, as a school board, we've kind of, we've called for it. I've called for it. I wrote, I drafted and wrote a resolution at one point, calling for a high school, elementary, city and chamber to form a committee to address, at the time it was absenteeism, this is prior to COVID. And unfortunately, it didn't go anywhere. It was a lot of buying. But, you know, this, I, I want to build this bridge, because schools can tell you a lot about your community. Schools can tell you about the neighbors surrounding it, you know, it's, it's a little microcosm of the community around it. And so, you know, going like back, we just had back to school night, and I went in and talked to every teacher and except for one school, I got there late. So I owe the doggo a visit, because I'm sorry, I just got there late. And I get, I didn't get to see, stop by every class. But talking to parents, talking to staff, like, hey, what's, what are you saying? You know, well, this is going on, I'm hearing this, or family, like, hey, you know, oh, this street, you know, or this. And so schools can tell you a lot about a community. I think if the city and schools aren't working together, it's just doing a disservice. Because not only can schools tell you about the community, but they can also provide, they have information on demographics, they have direct connections to families, direct connection to a educated and well-paid elementary workforce. So, yeah, I think it's workforce who's lives, who's, if they, if they don't live in Brawley, they support the economy, they eat there. And so you have access to all these things, and yet we're not, they're not utilizing it. So I want to build this bridge to, you know, so instead of us, hey, asking, now I can help, I can build it directly. I'm here, I understand where you guys are coming, let's, let's do it. And also like leveraging funding, there's some, I think most school districts probably have better funding, or healthy, healthy funding reserves or sources than the city, and leveraging that, you know, for community events. I just, at the county, we just had one for Sunbeam, and IAD donated a thousand dollars, and a thousand dollars, we were able to get slash slides and snow, so like, for a thousand bucks, five hundred bucks, you can go a long ways. And sometimes it's just making that connection, reaching out. And so doing like that, where we can leverage resources and build a community together. So, and even, it recently happened at the city. We donated, we gave fifty thousand to the city, our school district for the pool. And no one from the city was there to thank us, you know? So even things like that, you know, where we're working together, we're collaborating, and we're able to just, you know, reach those families and staff directly and cooperatively. And it's actually built up, you gotta, you gotta, it takes a village to raise a child, and we gotta work together at all levels. If we want our communities to get better and improve and feel heard and feel listened to, it's gonna take everyone, everyone working together at all levels. So, yeah.
Yeah. And when you think about it, say there's a city council meeting and there's a back to school night, I'm a hundred percent sure that most parents are gonna make it to the after-school one, and then there aren't to a city council meeting. So if you have some kind of connection to a school, to the school, you know, you can hear more from the citizens, because they'll be at a, at a school event, like a back to school, whatever. Like if you're hanging out and you'll probably hear something that, you know, might be city-related that, you know.
Yeah, even having joint meetings, you know, even having, you know, where a city can, hey, let's hold our city council meeting at Oakley. Let's hold our doggo, let's hold our school sign, really invite the, hey, we'll go have some food and we'll get, bring some food out, bring the community out. We could, reaching out to families of the schools, hey, maybe we can pitch in, how can we leverage? Yeah, no, there's, there's so many opportunities for collaboration. And like I said, it's just, it's not doing right by the people to not have that. And it is on some levels, don't get me wrong. It is, I have to give credit where credit is due. Our, our police chief has been doing outreach, as well as the Parks and Rec Director. They're very well-known with our, some of our board, but at a school, at a council level, policymaking level, it's not there. And I think I can help, I know I will. I know I will be that one to deliver that.
So you, you've been already walking and, you know, putting up signs and talking to the community. You, you were even doing it this morning. What's, what's some of the things that you've been hearing from the people from Brawley? What are some of the concerns and needs?
Change, something, something different. Something like, oh, you're, you're something different. You got my, I'm like, hear me out. I feel disrespected, you know? But no, I think also crime, there's, there's a, there's a crime and drug crisis happening, not just in Brawley, but across the country, really, valley across the country. What are we doing to address that? You know, fentanyl and it's a major issue that's, we're seeing it national level and it's, it's impacting us too. And if we don't, at least, very least, start having these conversations on how to address it, we're gonna be not prepared at all when it, eventually, when things hit the fan. And so a lot of crime, a lot of drug issues, but also I think mainly, like I said, is they want something, it's just a change. And I feel like I represent, from what I, from the people I've spoken with, that I represent, hey, you look like, I think you'll shake things up. And I, I will, but I also know, like I said, how do I think the experience I have, being on a board, being administrative and just being rooted in Brawley, understanding Brawley. You know, I got my family is, you know, Brawley residents, everyone, you know, more people know my family. Oh, you gave money to Son, or what was your grandpa? I was like, yeah. You got, you got my vote, you know? So it's like, hey, like, let me earn it. But I think to understand the importance of family and, you know, instilling that as well, being a model for the Brawley and looking at families, help each other out. It's been cool walking and delivering signs, because some, I'll just take one, say, oh, you could take one to my mom's down the street, or my son lives, or my daughter. So it's really, it's really been cool to like rediscover and reconnect with Brawley on this level, especially after the pandemic and everything. It's, I've really enjoyed the experience. I mean, except whatever happens in November, it's just been fun. It's just been a really great experience and wouldn't change for a thing, I said, regardless of what happens. And yeah, I just, I really, just like I said, want to lead Brawley. And I think if I should put in the work, which I am, I'll be able to do so after November.
Yeah. And, and it's weird to think that if you don't win, you'll be, I mean, not in.
Get to go on hikes, I get to.
Do more book reviews.
Photography. I got like five of them in the can. I just haven't edited, but yeah, I haven't been reading. Like my whole routine's been thrown off since this, I've really just dedicated and committed to really focusing, you know, also working out, I was reading a lot, doing all kinds of photography, and then the campaigns, you know what, I gotta, I got something to focus on and work on and really go out and earn the vote. But yeah, like I said, and like I said, my platforming for a stronger Brawley, Brawley needs to be stronger, stronger leadership, stronger community. And for a safer Brawley, like I said, the drug and crime crisis, for more beautiful Brawley, working with our park, our community to make sure our parks are affordable and accessible. There's been some issues regarding fees and how do we, how do we mitigate that? How do we make our parks as accessible as possible? In addition, Brawley's got some really nice parks. One of them is the Alistarou Splash Pad. I think it's underutilized. It's a very beautiful park, got splash pads, got basketball courts, it's got green grass. I'm always kind of, there's been some events, but I'm always somewhat disappointed that it's not utilized more. And I don't know if it's because it's on the east side or, or what, and I just, I'm just being honest. But how do we utilize that more and show off all of Brawley? Not just downtown, not just, you know, cattle call. Let's show off all of Brawley. We, that's the only way. You gotta lift everyone up. And so, and, and then a family-focused Brawley is my other, my third point. And that's like individuals like me who work, who are raising their family, and who's speaking on behalf of us. We're not retired, we're not a little bit older, we're, we're here and now. And, and I think we need to speak right now and ensure that we're represented. And so those three things, and but, and those three things really came about just from everything, talking to people that even as I'm walking, I'm adding on, tailoring it, just okay. But also being on the school board, some helped me see a lot of the needs in our community and things that I probably didn't see before. I had a lot of misperceptions, just to be quite honest, and how things work. And seeing that there's real huge needs that we need to address. And some of our streets, I mean, that's another topic is streets. But even like our front of Oakley, we have a street right in front of the school that's in horrible condition. Like it's, it's a street right in front of the school, horrible condition, and it should be a priority. And some people have told me like, I bet if it was on the other side of town, it wouldn't be like that. I'm sure, or I'm sure if their council members had their kids come in here, it wouldn't be like that. Is there truth to that? I don't know, but the truth is that, that street has not been prioritized, that it's really in bad condition. And what are we doing? You know, and that's not a school issue, that's a street. It's, it's a city issue that infects our school. So then it becomes a school issue, yet it's out of our hands. So things like that. You know, I said, I've had, I'm having a school supply drive on the seventeenth. I've had clothing, winter clothing drives, because I've seen, I know, I've gone to schools as just welcoming kids and families. And I've heard teachers and staff say, hey, there'll be kids here who won't even have a jacket, you know, who won't even have warm clothes when it comes. And they might have it at home, but they just might have forgot, or they might not have it at all. And so seeing some serious needs and how do we address it? And how do we, you know, just make things easy as, not easy, but make things more accessible and make help more accessible to families. So, yeah, I think being on a school board, I think, I think I still continue to think, school board is the most important board in our community, because they can tell you so much. But like I said, now I just want to build that connection and utilize all, just help our community at all fronts.
Hey, guys, sorry for the interruption, but I want to take this time and thank my sponsors. I want to thank my friends Camilo, Jake, Eric Ortega. I want to thank Eddie Lopez from Roots Creative, Ms. Norma Sierra Galindo, IAD Director, representing Division Five and serving the entire Imperial Valley. Will Torres from Valley Sports Network, your Imperial Valley source for sports. I want to thank Sergio's Tacos and Hot Dogs, with eight years of experience serving the Imperial San Diego Yama Counties with Mexicali-style hot dogs and taquitas. Contact Sergio at seven six zero five six two zero zero fifty-seven, or look for Sergio's Tacos and Hot Dogs on Facebook. I want to thank Eric Reyes from Los Amigos de la Comunidad, empowering communities together. Finally, I want to thank David Gassalem. If you're thinking of buying or selling a home in Imperial or San Diego Counties, make sure you contact David. He's not only a realtor, but an investor with over twenty years of experience, and he'll teach you along the way in one of the most important investments of your life. Contact David at seven six zero two three five nine five seven six, or look for David Gassalem on Facebook. All right, guys, we're now back to the show. You work with, with our current, current city manager, Ms. I forgot her, Esperanza. And she's an amazing grant writer. And obviously, you, you mentioned how you're going from a healthy budget to something that's not, you know, I mean, I think all, most cities in, in the valley are, you know, really tight when it comes to, to money. Did you learn anything from Miss Esperanza that you could probably, you know, bring to the city and bring in?
Making sure that Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. Now, she's a stickler for procedure. I think above all, there's, yeah, there's some funding opportunities that, that are out of city hands, that's just maybe a county or state. But what I learned, I think, for Esperanza is that the importance of reaching out, collaborating, and then doing things right. She's a stickler for, they may, if something's gonna be done, it's, it's gonna be done, and it's gonna be done correctly. And it's, she'll, she'll get it done herself. I've seen her, you know, there's some tragedies at desert shores with some fires. I've seen her drive out, I've driven her, she's like, I need you to drive me. Okay. And I've driven her out to desert shore, so she'd simply hand out a document to families or have a family sign a document, so they can have shelter for the day. I've seen her, you know, be on the ground. There's been fire, there's a recent fire in Sealy. And I think the newspaper reported as she was like directed to go, no, she wasn't directed, she just showed up. Like, what are you doing here? You know, I, I was directed, what are you doing? So, no, what she taught me is just the importance of work, collaboration, and doing things right. And from there, obviously, as a city manager, now she has that perspective. And that's, I'm not, I'm not someone, like I said, going back to making those connections, reaching out on solutions. You know, if I'm elected, I have no, have no qualms, no hesitation to call, hey, this is an issue, how do, how would you solve it? What would you hope to see from your council members and support or whatnot? So, yeah, no, I just learned a lot, I think, on leadership. So yeah, no, I just learned a lot, I think, on leadership now that she's in this leadership role that uh, I can take as a, a council member if elected, but you know, just I understand the role of administration too. That's the one thing, I think sometimes people will see cities or counties or the organization, they see the board, but there's so much that goes beyond. And uh, giving them their respect and support that they need to succeed. Cause there's so much, you know, as elected, we just show up a few times a month. That's it. That's, that's all we do. It's of those in administrative and those employees that they're day in, day out, you know, making sure that things are running how they should. Sometimes making sure things are in despite not having the proper resources or assistance. So uh, also putting on for them and making sure that they're in a good place to succeed. I'm not going to put anyone or put anything on anyone. Uh, expecting them to fail. I'm expecting them to succeed, but also it falls on me as a leader to ensure that they have the resources and capability to uh, find success. So uh, yeah, just, I think that's where I've learned from Esperanza is just, as I guess leadership, strength, just uh, yeah, the determination she has. Yeah, I've, I'm very fortunate. I've worked with her and I really uh, have the highest respect for her and really was so happy and proud when she became city manager of your city.
Yeah, I, I had a chance to talk to her and, and I think like, like I told her, um, um, she's, she's mom, but she, you know, she's, she means business.
Yeah. Oh, she, what was that Norma, Norma Aguilera tone, which says she leaves a small friend, but one hard to fill. I think that was uh, the guy, right?
And um, well, come on, come on, you're good to go. Um, and I guess this is going to be like my, my uh, my tough question.
Okay.
Um, a lot of people might think, you know, you, you, like you mentioned, you know, your grandma had this uh, property empire. Your parents have, are small business owners. Um, there might be people out there that might say like, oh, you're somebody that comes from, you know, you, you
Privilege? Um, yeah, no, I, and I've, you know, I, I don't, I
Um, how, how do you tell, you know, they're always going to say that and then they're going to say, he might not look out for the yeah, the people on the east side or, or
That's fair. I, you know, uh, that's fair. You know, I've never forgot where, you know, the first times I did give out to my grandparents. Yeah, I think I posted that and I, I went, I was like, thinking of that post and I was like crying, like no joke, like just thinking of like those few generations, my grandparents were farm workers, you know, and they also taught me, hey, you know, you're the same as anyone. My grandma married, my daughter married, I said, I went in the seventies, I think, sixties or seventies, she was a single mom working at a clothing store. You know, I, I talk about, she's built a little empire. That was, she wasn't, you know, she, she had, and it's funny because her, she has like nine brothers and sisters are all self-employed. All from the farm, all farm workers, all working in the fields when they're a young age and looking where they came from. And in two generations, now her grandson's running. You know, she's helped through work, determination. She helped set up her son for success, who then helped set up me for success. And understanding that, uh, my other grandma, my other, my Nana Rosa and Tata Wacho, they still live on, they live on the east side. They still live on the east side. Um, and so, uh, no, I, I get that, you know, except I don't, I, I don't roll my Rs as well as I should. My Spanish is not, and you know, and, and they're probably right at some point. I think in some points of my life, I failed to see the bigger picture of things. But I can tell you this, being on that school board and actually making an effort to get to know our schools and our community helps see the bigger picture and the bigger needs. Um, my, and I'm always willing to say when I'm wrong. So no, I think, yeah, I grew up on the west side and I'm not, I can't deny that. My parents uh, gave me every opportunity to succeed through work, but also my parents are small business restaurant owners. My parents don't take any days off. Sunday and Saturday are the busiest nights. It's so that, and they still have to be there during the week. So um, you know, yeah, I've been very fortunate, uh, but also seeing that uh, with help and assistance, you know, people, everyone needs help. And we need to be, be able to provide that whether through public, whether through private, whether just at community level. I've been fortunate to get help, you know, I know, um, actually going back to even the drug issue, the drug, drug, the drug crisis. Uh, you know, uh, I've had my issues with drugs and alcohol and I was able to get support and help. Um, and a lot of it too was because of my privilege that I'm not uh, blind to. And so, but how do we get, make sure that those who went through the same things I did, get that same help? Even if they don't maybe have the family with the money or the means or the resources. How do we, as, as a community, as a public sector, as a government, uh, provide that help? Cause they, when it comes to drugs, it's a big, big issue everywhere. It's like sometimes people don't want to talk about it, like, you know, but it impacts us all. The overdose deaths have tripled in the last few years. Fentanyl is uh, poisoning our streets, poisoning our cities and differentiating between vendors, sellers and users. I think and, and proper punishment for those that are selling. And also, yeah, there has to be consequence for users, but also I think has to be also um, help and assistance. That's not to some level, to some degree, like I said, at some point, hey, you know, but um, we just, at the, at the very least, having a real conversation on some of these things. But yeah, what, what some people might say of yeah, I was born on the west side. I don't know Spanish, but dude, I'm brown. Like no one, no one is, you know, I know who I am, you know, I, and I, and uh, yeah, it's, it's
Have you been practicing your Spanish now that you're walking the streets again with it?
Yeah, oh yeah, dude, I've been trying new man. I've been, every, I have a CD in my, CD in my car. I tried to stand comedy. I tried, I went down to Mexicali to practice, but um, you know, like I said, um, I, it's never lost to me. I'm Mexican-American, I'm Hispanic, I'm brown, I'm darker than most people I know. You know, I know who I am. I know who I am. And um, yeah, it's, there's going to be people who say I don't represent or this and that. To himself funding this, uh, I'm not accepting any donations and don't get me wrong. There's something that need, I don't think I needed to this campaign. Uh, it makes me hungry. It makes me have to go out and run the vote. And uh, um, yeah, no, I, Brawley as a whole, man, we need, and, and I think at the end of the day, people can say what they want. Uh, I think the work speaks for itself, you know, and, and what I've tried to do, and I think I brought up current issues even before this question. I think some of the questions I answered helped you see, hey, I see a bigger picture of things. So
Do you think you get more hate because of, you know, your quote unquote privileged life or your outspokenness before, you know?
I think I just do things without asking. And I think there's, this is going to be, we're in the weeds here, thinking politics, local politics. Um, there's gatekeepers, there's people that, you know, you gotta yeah, I think, and it's no, I know Collexo, there's a shift and uh, it's same in Brawley. It might not be as vocal uh, as outright, but Brawley, same thing. I think we're just seeing a shift in new leadership coming up. And uh, for those that are in positions of power, it's threatening. And I think when, some people, when they feel threatened rather than embracing it, will push back. And sometimes that pushback uh, makes people say and do uh, really petty things. I've even, and I've experienced it myself. Um, so yeah, I think um, you know, it's unfortunate because sometimes I feel like those that are trying to bring me down are the ones that look exactly like me. I'll just, I don't leave that at that. I think it's unfortunate, you know, I think you had Ramon come up, kind of talk, sometimes crab in a bucket mentality in some ways. You know, it's, yeah, like I said, I'm sure if I paid some people to put up signs for me, I'd get their support. But I can, if I can do it myself, I will. You know, my grandma's told me, hey, you know, you want it done, do it yourself, do it, and done right. And I think too, yeah, I think I'm somewhat independent. Uh, I just, you know, even this campaign, I didn't really talk to anyone. I have no committee. I have no uh, no PR firm. It's just me. I, I design my own things. I print out my own flyers, I'm buying my own signs directly. Um, I'm putting up everything by myself. I'm walking by myself. I'm not saying, hey, everyone, come on. I think I have to, I think I'm going to have to just put out something, hey, join me because, but it's just me. It's just me and I think some, I don't know, like, I, I, I just think it's, it's a shift happening right now. There's a shift happening right now and, and, and politics. I think the local politics uh, is filled, sometimes filled with ego and um, control. But I also see, like, I've been very fortunate to uh, be around and learn from, I think people went above and beyond. I just attended the vestiture ceremony of the honorable Ruth Bermudas with the negron, seeing someone like that who's like always saw putting on for the valley at a higher level. Never got bogged down. I think it's easy to get bogged down, this petty kind of small town politics and just, where we're just going in circles, not really serving anyone, just self-serving or being self-serving. And, but I always see it as, this is always a higher level that we need to take it as. That's why I said when I uh, trying to represent Brawley in the valley at a higher level, uh, to tell our story, to build those connections, to put on. So people don't, when they Google the valley, they're not seeing all the negative headlines, but seeing something positive. Cause there are some really great people and really great work uh, being done. So, you know, I just do me. And, and I've always been like, when I had my podcast, no one told me, you know, and like I said, I said some pretty crazy things and I was acting a fool at times on it. But you know, I live and learn and um, I just, I've always just, I think, been me. I think I just try to be authentic and sometimes me is wrong. Sometimes the me, being me is on the wrong side of the, I've come on here and apologized, I think for a few, to a few people, you know, cause I don't know what I'm wrong. Um, but yeah, it's just, it's the way it is. I'm sure there's going to from now until November, I'm sure, I'm already getting some, some pushback, I guess you can say, behind the scenes on certain things I'm apparently doing or just uh, just a nitpick. That's fine. I think the voters are smart.
It's part of the game, right?
Yeah. And then, well, I think also the voter and, and ultimately the voters are smarter than that. I think the voters can see right through things and the voters can tell who's, who's about it and who's not, no matter what, they're so and so said or what they're saying or, you know, it's um, just comes with the territory. Being in comedy though, having, having experience in stand-up comedy, you gotta have thick skin. You gotta let things roll off your back. So all these things, I think have just kind of helped me develop into who I am right now. And right now, I'm ready to be the leader that Brawley deserves.
So you're, you, you say thirty-one when you first won your, you're seeing, you're like twenty-seven or less?
Thirty-two right now.
So what would you tell, because Collexico has a couple of um, uh, Hildman Salinas is here in, in the house. Um, he's running for, for um, city council. Raoul is running for reelection. Um, obviously Raoul had a, kind of like a short term. So I'm, I'm, I'm assuming he's still learning the what would you tell somebody like Hildman Salinas uh, uh, about, you know, being a elected official, um, being somebody young, being somebody that has no experience, quote unquote, on, in politics. Cause I'm, he's, he's been involved in, 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 you know,
Get out. No, I'm kidding. They keep, just keep doing what you're doing, you know, just be you. Don't. There's all kinds of people, people will say they're on your side, people will say this and the next day, this, yeah, it's weird. Uh, I mean, I've had some strange relationships just recently, not even, not even uh, with people that, just because I didn't support, not that, I'm not uh, against you, but simply not supporting you is like seeing as, no, you're against, there's a lot of this weird. Uh, what would I tell somebody young though? Um, just, just do you, just do you. And, and just connect with people and connect with the community in any way possible, you know, ask questions later. Just, you know, because some people, everyone was going to try to do it like this, do this. You know, unless you're true to yourself, unless you know, you know, true to the community, true to the people, uh, they'll see right through it. Uh, you know, I've always just done things on my own, you know, the podcast, uh, my career. Um, it's just work, dude. I've, like I said, my grandparents, going back, worked their way up, you know, from nothing to, like I said, my grandma, I got this little, the empire, but uh, simple means started just with work. And my grandparents, my mom's side, uh, you know, they still live on the east side, but they have their home that they're rooted in. Uh, my grandma would eventually uh, become a cafeteria worker at the high school. My grandpa, a janitor, a custodian at the uh, hospital. So now they're able to retire. And then their daughters, my mom, small business owner, my aunts in the nursing industry. Uh, fortunately, my aunt did pass away from um, uh, she, she had a history of drug abuse. And so, you know, that also ties into providing, making, getting people help because it's impact the the, the drug crisis has impacted my family, not just impacted me directly, my, my family. And I never, never forgetting that. And my aunt was uh, oh, mine was cool. Mine was, my aunt Sandy was a loving person, you know, I can't, you know, even though I knew, she had her issues with drugs, always, I would see her on the street. I mean, she was on the streets at one, at some points and aim me home, you know, and that's my aunt Sandy, that's right, that's right, you know, and um, seeing people like that who also need help. Yeah, so, yeah, you know, I, I do take a little offense. People say, oh, I'm not I don't want to, I only want to represent certain, I want to represent all, everyone. Everyone gets impacted. Everyone needs help. Everyone's looking for leaders. Everyone needs, yeah, no, man, people just say things just to say things. Um, but no, I guess, I guess going back to the question of what would I tell young people, just do you, just do you and just work, put in the work, man.
Yeah. And I think um, you know, when it comes to, to um, you know, being out in public and, and answering questions, I think um, when it comes to like a, a lot of local politicians, I think you're the one that's and I'm not saying because you're somebody that I know.
Right in front of you.
No, and because you're, you know, I, I consider you a friend. Um, I think that, you know, you're
Pretty open.
Yeah, and it comes to, when it comes to like social media, like you're constantly posting, a lot of people that run for office, they'll post, post, you know, during election time. And then afterwards, they, and, 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 and it's, I'm not saying it, um, that you're kind of showing off, but it's kind of, um, it shows that you're out in the community, it shows the events that you're
It just humanizes dude, because I just remember like uh, even at work or just, you always see people, oh, they're there. And I'm like you. I, I laugh at the same stupid memes you do, you know, I, I like to, you know, take pictures of my food too. It's just humanized. Like I'm just, I'm you. You, I'm you and you're me, you know, and uh, your issues are my issues. And, and I go through it too. My house gets dirty, you know, my ten year old, my, my yard, I have to, sometimes it's like, the grass grows higher than it should, you know, uh, uh, you know, I have, I'll go, I go through it too. You know, I go through it and yeah, sometimes I do put on a front maybe like, ooh, but no, I'm, I'm just, I, I ain't got, I got nothing right. So um, but yeah, and you know, that's one thing I heard recently. Some guys like, yeah, you know what? Yeah, I don't agree with everything you're saying, but you know, I do appreciate that you always say like, why you, why you made that decision or why you're voting that way or why, because at the board meetings, I'm going to say, I, I don't like to, yes, no, I like to at least, let me give you some context. My board reporter, even I, I spoke at city council meetings on certain issues. And at the, at the end of the day, people respect that. Like I said, like, I don't agree with you. I think you're completely wrong on that, but you know what? I did respect that you went up and made your case why. And so, yeah, I think uh, I like to just be out there. I like to just kind of, I humanize myself, but I think build that connection with people through social media and, and yeah, I don't know. I just, I want to, like I said, I don't want to just feel, I think that's one thing I've been hearing is that people feel disconnected from our council.
Yeah. And I think it's overall, like even here, um, with um, our school board, obviously, um, you know, I work in the school district. So I kind of like, being somebody that I work through the district, I feel that, I, I feel disconnected from the school board. Um, and when it comes to city council, um, yeah, I think it's a mixed, mixed feeling there. Um, but overall, like overall on the county, you can see that there's, like, I don't really know who's in the, in Brawley City Council besides Ramon, because but yeah, I think that sometimes people do overuse social media and it gets uh, kind of tired or boring like, but when it comes to like doing events where like you're in the community, um, I think that, I mean, it might be a little bit self-serving, but it's, it's
Yeah, it's both ways. Like, don't they, I'm flexing sometimes on Instagram. You know, it's just, it's all, it's all about building these connections. At the end of the day, relationships, connections and um, you know, that's not being isolated. I try not to be, it's easy. I wish, uh, sometimes I could isolate and just, but I don't want to. You know, I, I want to be up in the mix. Uh, I want to hear people out. I want to get the conversations going, get the ideas flowing. Uh, and I can't sit still, you know, I'm always just, and so
Yeah, I don't know, I, I don't know how you do everything you do, man.
Yeah, me neither, man. No, at the, at the expense of my family, no, you know, Holly's been great. My daughter is, you know, I, I I, I try to find a balance at tonight. I'm doing nothing tonight. Monday through Friday is boom, 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 Friday morning with the campaign. But most of the time, if I'm not running for the campaign, finding out that Monday through Friday work and all the functions that go along, meetings and all that stuff. But Friday night, Saturday morning, Sunday morning, I'm with my, I'm, I'm unplugged. Excuse me, I'm out, you know. See ya. I'm with my family. So trying to find that balance of uh, family. I think that's one thing I think I See ya. I'm with my family. So trying to find that balance of uh family. I think that's one thing I think I'd like you to ask uh guests, because I know you have election season, so you're going to come with like, what should be, why is this important? And, and uh, that's, you know, what people are doing, you know, because these, these positions aren't hard. But they do take its toll. And what do electeds, I think, are doing for their physical, mental wellbeing? I think that's sometimes I think a lot of electeds here don't propose policy, don't craft anything. They're simply running off of their uh decision-making. So I think it's even more important to make sure your physical, mental, uh spiritually, in some ways, wellbeing, staying conscious. What are they doing? Because uh, I, I really, like I said, COVID really brought home. I was never unhealthy, but it really
Yeah, I think, I think um, I noticed it more with people around me that, you know, it was an, something that we need, we needed to address. Come on in, come on in.
What were you, what were you saying about Tomas? What was that?
But yeah, yeah, going back to the mental health and, and physical health, I think, like, I, I mean, I think during the pandemic, I got the healthiest I've been in a long time. I started fasting, so I lost like thirty pounds. Um, but mentally, yeah, I think it, it did, uh, it was draining and I know people around me that um, it was both ways, physically, mentally, that, that it hurt, hurt them. So, um, yeah, that's something that, it's a good question to ask.
Also too, I think another question, and Tomas, you can ask him, like what decisions have they made that, you know, in retrospect, they maybe do differently? That's like a hard question, but also I think like introspective, because there's some decisions, and don't get me wrong, at the time I, I was making the right, my look back, could I handle it differently or, you know, because there's some decisions as Tomas, I elected are going to get people upset, whether it's change, whether it's this, whether that, and uh, you know I, I look back at certain decisions probably we made as a board where I was on the majority or the minority and could have handled differently, how it could have been, but uh, yeah, things aren't, like I said Brawley Metro, we've done some great things, but it's been rocky. And I look back and how could I have learned and done it differently? So I think instead of like, you know, don't, don't let them just come on and give a platform like, you know, grill them.
Yeah, I mean, especially for, for like incumbents. So any closing thoughts? We're already at fifty minutes. Um, closing thoughts?
I thought it was only got twenty, man. I blocked up. No, um, like I said, I, I I'm, I, I love Brawley. I'm a Brawley boy and I want to lead my community. And um, I really want to lead to a stronger Brawley, to a strong leadership. You know, safer Brawley, more beautiful Brawley and a family-focused Brawley. Those three things can really build up our community. Those three, I got three things are going to be my priority, uh, priorities. But what you get with electing me is someone's willing to work, someone's willing to listen, and someone who's shown that. I think throughout the four years uh that I've been on the school board and you can look prior to the school board, simply with my podcast, simply just being involved, simply just um being me, I've shown that, hey, I'm going to put on, I'm going to put on for the community. I have a vision. But I also understand uh how to, the maneuvering that goes along in politics and governance and in government and administration. And uh, I intend to uh navigate through all those things to, to build a stronger uh city, which is a stronger Brawley. So hopefully I can get people's vote. Hopefully, and I, I mean, fifty-five minutes of people just to comb through and nitpick and find things I said and uh, so they can attack me. That's fine, but I'm transparent. I am open and I am me. And I think people respect that. I think voters respect that. And I think they'll be able to see that and hopefully elect me come November eighth.
All right. Well, thank you. And, and you know what? Before we end, you mentioned the podcast a lot and last night, I'm also with John Moreno and he mentioned um, which was kind of true, the, that I was kind of like a spin-off of
My legacy. You are my legacy. I have a, I rebuilt a legacy.
So yeah, I want to give you credit to that. Because yeah, I mean, once you went into um, the school board and kind of took the reins and started the Quebasa Calixco and and some, somebody that was like in the, in the background kind of um pushing me to do as well as Mondays.
Oh, I just, I've been seeing him lately. What's that, what's he up to? I've been seeing him everywhere.
I think he, he's, he lost like thirty pounds or something.
Yeah, he's putting shirtless selfies. What are you doing, dude? What are you doing, man?
Yeah, have some selfies.
No, there's a need, man. I, I did my podcast because I saw a need and um, I'm really proud. And yeah, proud of what you've done. You know, you've continued informing people because why I started it was because I, or I'm, I don't know where to get this info. And so I just created it myself and did it myself. And you created this yourself and um, really built a cool thing. And you have a lot to be proud of. So even though you're a spin-off, you did this on your own, dude. You did this on your own and I didn't help you.
No, I, I thought I had the Bob Sayer, but I have a Bob Sayer, so you're a foolhouse and I'm fuller house now.
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah, yeah.
All right, good. Well, thank you so much for being on. Um, thank you for coming down to Calixco. Um, and um, good luck with your campaign. And um, yeah.
Cheers.
Cheers. I'm already done with my beer, but Calixco apples. All right, guys. Thank you so much for listening or watching and we'll see you in the next one. Peace.